Seven, which is the Adoption Service Annual Report, and Heather is going to come up and be talking to us on that paper. Thank you very much, Heather. Over to you.
Okay, well, this is a... Oh, thank you. This is a report that we have to present a report every six months to elected members, and it's about the functioning of our adoption service. Providing an adoption service is a statutory requirement for local authorities, and it's your role to scrutinise how well that function is being performed. So this is the annual report, so it's looking back at 2014 to 2015, and looking at our performances regarding placing children for adoption, children being adopted, assessing prospective adopters, and other areas of adoption work that we get involved in. I wonder if it's perhaps best to open up to questions, if people have specific questions?
I mean, we were very fortunate, sort of pre the start of the meeting, that we had a very comprehensive run through. It wasn't even a council, it was a nice saunter, so we had the opportunity to ask a number of questions there, but I know that there was a couple of items in appearance which we felt needed to be discussed at this public meeting, so, Tom, over to you.
Thank you. Can I just ask a little bit more about the breakdown of the productions? Just what percentages have broken down, and what's done in those situations that they have?
We placed 32 children last year. One little boy, we placed... Only one of those children, in fact, with 33, only one child did the placement not work out, and he came back into a foster home. He's subsequently been placed for adoption again with another family. I mean, basically, we got the match wrong. Going back to 2011, we've only had three placement breakdowns, including that little boy. So if you look at some of the tables that we have within the report, in that time, we placed 62, nearly 90 children for adoption, so it is a very low breakdown rate. Nationally, it is adoption is generally successful. The figure that's usually quoted nationally is 3% as an average breakdown rate, so we're performing well, well within that.
Can I ask, are there any particular lessons you learnt from those breakdowns that, you know, mean that certain things are changing in any way?
Every time a placement doesn't work out, and we're talking about breakdowns between placement and adoption order, and what I explained earlier was that local authorities place children for adoption, and then there's a time lag before an adoption order is made by the court, so we measure that. Every single one is different. We have a disruption meeting if a placement doesn't work out. It's chaired independently by somebody outside of Bournemouth, and we look to try and make sense of what happened. In all of those cases, it was felt that it was around the matching, and it was issues that we didn't know until the child or children had been placed. And I guess, you know, that's the test room, isn't it? That we do assessments of people. They're very often people who haven't been parented before, and we are placing very vulnerable, very complex children. And sometimes, we just don't get that match right. We do persevere, so with all of those children, they have subsequently been placed for adoption. And I think that's the important thing, that we, you know, we learn the lessons from what has worked for that particular child, and in looking for another family, we're very careful not to repeat those sort of mistakes.
Ollie.
Thank you. I was really encouraged to hear that in 2012, the service was considered to be outstanding. I think that's really encouraging. Just so that it could perhaps provide me with a clearer idea, and so that we could support you further, what areas have changed so that a service that was once considered outstanding can now be judged as good with the new sort of Ofsted rules or judgment, if that's okay?
The focus is very much, in the single inspections, the focus is very much on the child's journey. So when we were inspected as a separate adoption service, foster did look at planning for permanence, and they did look at how plans were made for children to be adopted, but the focus has now shifted more to that, and they... The focus is very much on outcomes. It did feel a very different kind of inspection. I mean, I don't know if Lisa wants to comment, because you were very involved in that.
All right.
So... And in terms of why we didn't go outstanding this time, it was specifically around planning for children. There were a couple of children that the inspectors looked at, and it wasn't those children with adoption plans, it was the children or other children in the family, and they felt that our planning could have been timed out.
Very gently in the middle.
Testing. Just to add really, that the inspection regime and the inspection framework changed between 2012 and the new inspection framework came in 2014, and in fact, Bournemouth was one of the first to be inspected under that regime. And previously, as Heather's already explained, it was a single inspection of adoption services. This time round, in 2014, it was a joint inspection of all services, and there were limiting judgments. So if there was a query over something within the inspection, that meant that the adoption team couldn't get outstanding. So as much as the services provided by the adoption service is excellent, we know that, absolutely know that. There was one case where there was an older sibling, and another case where there was a younger sibling, and they dug and dug and dug, quite rightly, and they were querying the pregnancy planning round, so they... And that had an impact, and we acknowledged that at the time, so...
So if I just carry on along that same line, so going back to what Catherine was saying earlier, you know, we're excellent there, we were good there. Is there anything that you, your service, needs to help? Does it need something to go? I mean, you are really, really, really good. What else do you feel that you could do, just to move it on a little bit more?
Well, I think as you said earlier, the earlier presentation, it was directed, and earlier questions around the places that didn't work out, and even though the number's small, it has a huge impact on those children and on the staff who are working with those children.
I think even normal placement that falls down is one too many, isn't it?
Absolutely, absolutely. It, you know, really does have a huge impact. What... I think it kind of moves us into the challenges that are coming, which is around regional adoption agencies, and the government... That's why there will be change over the coming year. What it looks like, we don't know yet, but we do know that the government are very clear that there are too many local... There are too many adoption agencies operating, so each local authority is operating as a separate adoption service. So that's however many local authorities, there are 115, whatever it is, plus voluntary adoption agencies, who are not for profit adoption agencies, and there are about 30 of them. So you end up with about 180 adoption agencies in the country, placing around 5,000 children a year. And they think that is too small a scale, certainly for some local authorities. So our numbers are high in terms of children placed, children adopted, adopted assessed, given our size, but I do know of other authorities where they are placing a handful of children a year and assessing a handful of prospective adopters. So in terms of the economies of scale, in terms of speed of matching and placing children for adoption, the government feel that there needs to be some rational overhaul of the way adoption services are structured. And they're providing funding, which local authorities can bid for, to try and move those plans forward, and they're also using, was carrot and stick, this legislation as well that they will bring in, if local authorities don't rise to that challenge voluntarily. And their timescales, they are very clear, by the end of this government, there will be radical challenge.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at your table six, I'm delighted to see that the growth in both the number of families that have been approved for adoption, but also also table one and two. I mean, it's superb statistics to see the growth in the work that's done. My question is in two parts, really. First of all, have there been additional resources included to your department to be able to fulfil those, what are obviously increasing outputs? And perhaps if you can answer that first, I've got some subsequent questions on the reorganisation as well.
Children's Services reorganised in, I'll strike a date, 2013. 2013, and at that point, and you can see on the chart, significant investment was made in the adoption service, because every child being moved out to the adoption service is a saving, because they're no longer looked after. It's also in terms of outcomes for children, it's acknowledged to be a better outcome, it's placing them permanently with another family. So there was significant investment in staff there, and as you can see, we've kind of risen to that challenge, so yes, I think we should...
The second question is about, we obviously invest a lot of money in assessing Bournemouth families, which I was one, a long time ago, 10 years ago, 14 years ago now, and it was a superb experience that I had. Clearly, lots of those families, including me, adopted children from outside of Bournemouth. What is the arrangement that you make to sort of effectively sell, because obviously clearly there's a cost associated with doing that assessment? What is the financial deal that is done with other authorities to effectively recoup the cost of doing that assessment?
Okay, there are nationally agreed fees, interagency fees, which currently stand at £27,000 per child. So if we assess a Bournemouth family and a child from, say, Devon was placed with that family, then Devon would pay us £27,000 in total at the point of the adoption order. If it's two children, if it's siblings, then it's one and a half times that. If it's three children, it's twice that amount.
And given that we're very good at this, given you're outstanding, is there a business opportunity for us to actually grow that service, take over it, merge with other local authorities, and become a centre of excellence for doing this on a much grander scale, given that looks like it may be a profit centre?
It's kind of a leading question, I mean, certainly, yeah. We do that anyway. It's a bit of a kind of mixed economy at the moment, because the other side of that is, if we don't have a family reassessed, we have to pay another authority or another adoption agency the same amount of money. So these are flat rates. So what we've always done, since Bournemouth became a leader, was we've assessed some families who live within the borough, and we also assess them, that's sort of our around Bournemouth, because we can't place Bournemouth children usually with Bournemouth families, it's too close to birth family. So we do assess people in that arc, and that means we can place our children with those families, but there are times when we can't, and rather than children waiting, then that's when we would have to buy in a family from elsewhere. So we did, at the time the team was expanded, that was part of the remit, that we would do more assessments of Bournemouth families, which we did. Unfortunately, it hit that point, which within the report I talk about the national downturn in the number of children coming through adoption plans. So at the point at which we were significantly increasing the number of assessments of Bournemouth families, the number of children with adoption plans nationally dropped, and nationally those figures have dropped, looking at some of the recent data, by 50% from year on year. It's to do with what's happening in the courts, so it's quite a complex picture. It is beginning to pick up, because what we found was we had quite a lot of local families who we'd assessed in the expectation that they would have children placed from elsewhere, and they have been waiting, and waiting longer than we or anybody expected, and that's the same everywhere across the country. It is beginning to change quite significantly, so there is beginning to be movement, and in fact, we are in the middle of discussions with a number of local authorities about children from elsewhere coming to our families. And at the moment, it's a really healthy balance between the amount we're spending out on the trade and support, and the amount that will be coming in over the year. And that's the risk they're getting, because if we're looking at bringing money in by having children from elsewhere come into our families, we are very dependent on what's happening nationally, and we can't control that. So it is a bit of a balance, really, to do a bit of both. The government have also, in the last week, announced that they will be giving funding to local authorities to offset the interagency fee for children who are very difficult to place, so the older children, siblings, children from different ethnicities. And that will both help us to place our more difficult to place children, but it will also, I hope, free up other local authorities to, if they are constrained by finance, that it will free them up to be looking at some of our families as well.
And final question is, are we able to assess families from outside of Bournemouth?
Yes, we do, that's part of that, assessing families in that area.
And how do we recruit, or how do we recruit families from outside, and how do we go about building that?
Some of that is word of mouth, a lot of that is word of mouth, surprisingly, and the website has always been a good source of information, and we do active recruitment in... I always do that, but it's that arc around Bournemouth, we've got to see that sort of bit of strength there, but it is looking at families who are interested in adopting in that arc around Bournemouth, and we have always been quite successful in that respect, and that's the way we structured the services back in 1997, to do a bit of both.
Well, don't suppose the episodic deputy...
Thank you, Chairman. Actually, I discovered very much what I was going to say, but I did just want to offer particularly new members of the panel some reassurance about Bournemouth's performance in the context of what's happening nationally. I think in the past, certainly in the past of Parliament, there was some concern about local authorities not acting quickly enough to place children, and just to give you some context, our performance at the time was so good that we were invited along to give evidence of how come the House of Lords select committees, because it's, you know, understandably, they wanted to know both ends of the picture. And while our performance was very good, and we celebrate that, there is a story sometimes behind poor performance. So for example, somebody else was there from London Borough of Hildon, which contains Heathrow Airport. So many of their children coming into care for whom adoption might be the best outcome were teenage unaccompanied asylum seekers, and that is a more difficult case, you know, with all the varying ethnicities, all the reasons that they come to this country in the first place, to a young baby, not that they're ever straightforward, and I think, you know, Heather, that really jumps off the page, but really just to, you know, to explain to the panel that while there is national appetite for change, it is not because of the sort of performance that the Bournemouth match is consistently.
Thank you. Ollie.
Yes, thank you. I understand that there is pressure from above regarding mergers, but one thing that's really come apparent in the sort of eight weeks or so that I've been involved in children's services, that Bournemouth officers really know their children, and they know those children really well inside the mouth, not just by name or anything. And I wonder if that is partly the success of all the placements that you have had, particularly in the last year, with unfortunate three breakdowns, but actually we're dealing with human beings and we put them on little people in play boxes, so I appreciate that. I'm just wondering if you see that there may be difficulty if we have larger organisations, or we lose that connection that we have with these children? Is there a risk of that? Or are there benefits to be found by having larger Bournemouth?
I think that's a really deceptive question. I think we do well, because we know our adopted families, we know them well, and we do keep contacting many of them beyond the adoption order for all sorts of reasons, which is great. And we know the children well, because my team, we're the family finders, we are co-located in the same building at North Bournemouth, with the two teams that are involved in the court work, which leads to an adoption plan for the children. So when either of those managers are on leave, then I will cover for them, they will cover for me, we are literally on the same corridor in a very small building, and we are constantly talking, so we really do know the children very well. And I think that's something that we will be looking at with regard to mergers, as to how we can retain the best of what we do now, and maybe spread that a bit of practice. I don't know how it will work, but this is all really early days. We knew that this was all government agenda pre-election, because it was in the manifesto, and then subsequently we've had various bits of information that have come through. So we are looking very carefully, and that will be something that I really don't want to lose, and I just hope we can continue with that.
Tom, can I ask the cabinet member, do we have a policy on this in terms of where we are going, in terms of supporting this government initiative, and in terms of where we're likely to go as a policy towards allowing our adoption service to be absorbed, merged, or moved into a larger group? Is there a policy that you've brought yet?
I think we're waiting more to see what governments are bringing out. This is still very early days, and it's not actually so very long since the last Adoption Act, so we talk very closely with our neighbours, we provide a lot of other joint services, we have joint safeguarding children's court, we have joint health lobbying ones, and so a lot of children's services, we're very close to what our neighbours are doing. This is emerging policy, so we need to be ready, and ready, willing, and able to respond, but nor are we going to fail to act in what we regard as the best interest of children, waiting for the government to come and tell us what to do. We do, I mean, JLO's along, so a lot of regional meetings, service directors likewise, Helen's mentioned the South West Consortium, we have come to Bournemouth in October, the National Adults and Children's Conference. So all those opportunities to get involved, I've been along to meetings with the minister in the past, we are as involved as we possibly can be, and we will be responsive, always understanding that our most important driver is best interest of all the children.
And I'm sure that we'll regular feedback to this panel, so that we can have any input that needs to be had from this panel as well.
Yes, that's absolutely right, and the next report you would normally get in your cycle, as Heather set out at the beginning of her presentation, would be in six months' time. If there is any news before then about any potential regional arrangements, we'll come to you, Chair, and seek your permission to place something on the agenda earlier than that. If it's not earlier than that, we will include it in Heather's six month report.
Well, you're right. Yes, please.
Can I just ask, Newt of this panel, could you just take me through the journey of parents that want to adopt?
Well, Chair.
Thank you so far.
Yeah. We have a daily duty service, so anybody interested in adopting, we do encourage them to ring and speak to one of the adoption social workers, so it's somebody with... They're all very experienced social workers, so it's an opportunity to ask questions that perhaps are at the forefront of their mind. So if it's somebody who's single, that's often the question, "I'm single, can I adopt? I've got a child already, can I adopt?" So that's the first point of entry. People... Also, the website has quite a lot of detail about adoption on the adoption part of Bournemouth and all sorts of websites, so we encourage people to look at that. We hold information evenings on a monthly basis, so people who phoned in and want to know more, then we encourage them to come to an information evening. And that's really the opportunity to hear from professionals, but also we bring along people who have adopted, so they can talk about their personal experiences of what the process is going like. If people want to go beyond that, we arrange for one of the two practice managers on the team to visit people in their home, just again, you know, an information evening, a phone call, you're not going to talk about the particularly personal issues that perhaps you would want to. So that's an opportunity to talk to somebody in their own home. If they decide to go beyond that, then we would look at them, they register their interest in adoption, I would allocate an adoption social worker to begin the assessment process, which is now split into two stages. So stage one is the kind of basic checks, so DBS checks and other checks that we have to do, medicals. So that first bit is very much the sort of checks that have to be done, there's a day's preparation course, opportunities to talk to the adoption social worker, again, it's about building relationships from the very beginning. And then if people, assuming those checks come back satisfactorily, then people move on to stage two, which is much more the in-depth home study. So it's finding out about people's upbringing, their own childhood, what the potential impact of what's happened to them in their childhood has been to have on them becoming adopted parents, looking at support from family, from friends, really trying to get to know these individuals. And then at the end of that, a report is completed by the adoption social worker, which the prospective adopters see and can comment on. That's then presented to the adoption panel, another statutory body, and that panel consider suitability and make recommendations as suitability. And then the decision about somebody's suitability is with the Service Director Children's Social Aid, Sophia Drank, at the moment. And that's the process, it's a process in a nutshell, but that's essentially what it is. And it comes back to that relationship at that very beginning, as soon as somebody picks the phone up, they are talking to people who know what it's all about.
But where does the... Yes, so they're on the register, but where's the child going to come from? How is that process then?
So they're approved as adopters, suitable to adopt. It might, if they live outside of the Bournemouth area, so there's arc around Bournemouth, then we can probably impose on that children with them, because when they... It's the issue about people living in Bournemouth being too close to where the birth family come from, because adoption is that complete break of the legal relationship between the birth parent and the child. So Bournemouth children, we do place outside of Bournemouth. The Bournemouth, the people who live in Bournemouth that we assess, they will look to having a child placed with them from another adoption agency. And there are all sorts of collaborative arrangements that make that possible. So we're members of the South West Adoption Consortium, which is a very big consortium, we're holding it in the South West, we have informal arrangements within that, so we talk to each other about potential placements. There is a national adoption register, which backed the British Association for Adoption and Fostering Run, so if a child hasn't been matched within three months of a plan for adoption, and prospective adopters haven't had a child matched with them within three months of approval, we put them on the adoption register, and matches are generated from that. There are now what are called adoption activity days, so I think if anybody saw the TV series from the...
That one.
Yeah, that they were, one of them was featured, and there are opportunities for children who need families, families who are looking for children, to meet informally, and potential matches generate from that. There are all sorts of other mechanisms as well, but within the adoption world, there are lots of ways to make sure that children aren't waiting, adopters aren't waiting, and actually, if you put the two together, you'd have a really good match.
What we should do is, Tom, who was just about to find out what he was going to do, will circulate the link to the website, and if we could have any of the leaflets and the sort of pamphlets that are generated, if they could also be attached to the minutes of this meeting, so that all members of the panel have actually got all that information, so they can take it out to their communities. so they can take it out to their communities.
Okay.
That's okay? Lovely. Will we finish, Helen?